Welcome to the first day, Madame Fatsima Biao. Welcome, Madame Fatsima. Good evening and welcome to the CRI debates, the F and the series. Organized by the CRI and Il Raj, it aims to engender a healthy civil engagement with and among citizens of Sierra Leone. A healthy discourse is healthy for the growth of a nation and for the health of its people. The CRI debate is produced by the Uvalde Media Empire and is sponsored by Mercury International, Afisal and City Globe. My name is Toma Rofu Fana. I wish to welcome you here. Tonight's event is not the traditional debates we have been used to. For this quarter of the CRI debate, it is a special event, a town hall with His Excellency Julius Fadabio, marking the third anniversary of his ascension to the presidency of Sierra Leone. On the 4th April 2018, the retired Brigadier became the first elected president of our country to have been born after independence in 1961. Coincidentally, it is 60 years this month since Britain handed over control of our nation to us. The president came with his vision to address some of the perennial problems that had beset our nation before and since the Union Jack was lowered in Sierra Leone. They include the setbacks in ensuring law and order, governance deficits, increased poverty occasioned by a sliding economy and official theft, the steady erosion of the country's human development capital, protecting the homogeneity within the diversity of our politiveness as a nation, and accountability, especially in the fight against corruption. But how much has President Biao done in the last 36 months to mitigate these harsh realities? For the purpose of this town hall, we shall limit our conversation with the president to those key areas which, by the way, are cross-cutting. The town hall will last for 90 minutes, including a 10-minute break, and the president will have a 30-minute cocktail with us at the end of it all. Now, we have a very simple and straightforward set of rules here tonight. Please turn your mobile phones on what I call double silence mode, and we should cease from making any sounds of approval or disapproval at what we have said. We will only clap to welcome the president during the interval and at the end of the debate. I understand what is called spontaneity, but I also am familiar with what is called discipline. On that note, I wish to welcome the president, Julius Fadabio, to this the first ever presidential town hall in Sierra Leone. Thank you very much, Mr. President, and welcome. I was going to suggest that since you and I are socially distant, if you could kindly take off your mask, sir. And I reckon you and I have taken our COVID-19 jobs, so we should be fine. Thank you very much, Alex.
I will take it off so that they will know that it's mother Biao.
Thank you very much for accepting our invitation here. Now, first of all, Mr. President, what are the last three years been like for you as president? Have things panned out the way you had expected them?
Of course, not exactly. It has been a very difficult period, as you can all imagine, because of the enormity of the task at hand. But with the leadership I'm providing, I'm confident that we can lay the foundation to move forward.
I'm going to ask you a very interesting question. I think it is interesting because even if for a few weeks' time that you had been a head of state before you were elected 3 years ago, how do you compare the two amidst the accountability frameworks that exist under current mandates and when you have a leadership of state? What's the difference?
Well, I had the freedom to choose what I wanted to do for my country without much ado. Today, I have to take it to cabinet, I have to take it to parliament, I listen to civil society, they are here. I have to listen to everybody. It's totally different. You can do quite a lot with a military government, but I'm not suggesting that you go military anymore. That's why I took off my uniform, so I'm very happy to be a civilian leader.
Interesting. I'm sure somebody might be interested in knowing a bit more about that, but let's get down to brass tacks, Mr. President. We're going to start off with the economy. We've got a few blocks that have established which we duly inform you about. We're going to begin with the economy, which obviously is very key because whatever you want to do, you definitely do need to have a strong economy for the finances to be able to do so. Now, as a candidate, you and the man who would later become your vice, your vice finance minister, Jacob Safa, declared the state of the economy, promising to fix it if you got elected. Would you say you and your finance team have done a good job of fixing the economy of Sierra Leone?
We have not fixed the economy to the extent that we want to, but we started the process and I'm very satisfied with the state of where we are today. We, as you rightly stated, you cannot run any country or even an organization with a bad heart economy. So, we knew we were going to meet with a very difficult situation and we were equally prepared. We had planned for victory, and so when we got the victory, I selected J.J. Safa, who you just mentioned, to lead my team of economists for economic recovery. Have they done a commendable job? Yes, I would say. And that is why they are still there. If not, they will not be there. What did we do? We don't have, we have a lot of resources, we have not managed them properly. And therefore, we have been dependent on the support of donor partners for a well-laid extent. And we need them. They are allies in our fight against poverty, in our fight to search forward in development and the rest of the activities we are engaged in. We needed to win the confidence of those allies. So what did we do? Well, we made a commitment to them. But I must say first that they had left this country already. Why? Because we, as a country, the former leadership was never listening to them and there was poor economic management, high inflation, huge debts. Our mirrors were huge. Everything, I mean, the economic baseline was such that it would actually frighten you to take over a country like this. So with all of that in mind, we decided we were going to do what was necessary for economic recovery. And one of the things we did was to, one, gain the respect and confidence of our partners. And we engaged them, made a commitment to them, in certain reforms, and we engaged with those reforms, and then later realized that we made business and we are committed. So the IMF came on board and in their, in the review by the board, they accepted the three-year economic reform for Sierra Leone, an economic program for Sierra Leone by the Economic Recovery League would help us. But what is important about the IMF is the fact that when you have a program with IMF, it gives you a clean, a bill of health, which other organizations around the world, we always look at, before the immediate issue. So once we got the IMF from board, the others started to come back, especially donor countries that had abandoned Sierra Leone because of poor economic management, the World Bank and other institutions, noting that we were serious and committed. So that was how they came back, and the rest is history. You can see their participation, you can see, even in the middle of COVID, we are able to get over 100 billion United States dollar. That was a sign of confidence in our capacity to efficiently lead this country economically.
So, it's common, Mr. President, they didn't mind, they helped naturally have a country, which was indeed not these developing countries, but you know how they distributed their amounts. And it's interesting you spoke about the IMF giving a clean bill of health. To the world that is Sierra Leone, they are basic understanding this, the brass tacks, I mean, the issue of commodity prices, the issue of the value of the Leon, and then it goes to this. The national currency, the Leon, keeps plummeting against the US dollar, for example. Let me give you some figures. In March of 2018, the Leon was 7,603 to the US dollar. That's according to the Bank of Sierra Leone mid-rate. Now, in February this year, it was at 10,207, the same Bank of Sierra Leone mid-rate. That is 34% depreciation. How do you plan to stop the apparent free-for-all of it?
I wouldn't call it a free-for, it definitely have challenges. Even when we are making every effort, we are putting our heads to the problem, but there are challenges. The plummeting of the Leon in terms of value have been one of those. But we are up to the top side. The battle of Sierra Leone has put in place measures and has been fairly stable ever since. We also, you, you have to understand also that when we came in, 2 months had closed down and we are not getting anything from outside Sierra Leone in terms of, to boost up our economy. So we had inherited an extremely difficult challenge. And to tackle these challenges, we have to generate money from within this country, not only to manage the economy, but also to take care of the huge debts that we inherited. That is not my task. And because we, the revenue generation was a commitment we made in my first executive order, we were able to get enough accumulated enough to even start a national program, which was really hard, the free quality education, which, by the way, is one of the most ambitious and audacious programs we have in Sierra Leone after independence. So, we have been making effort and we continue, our heads, we have our heads around it, but we, we have to have the right timing. First, as we were making efforts to understand the economy and how we could revive it or reactivate activities within the economy, then we had COVID. We have not used COVID as a tool.
I was going to say, because even before COVID, the economy remained tough.
It has to be stubborn because of the dynamics that they make. We are not exporting. We are not exporting at all. So, and you do not start to export overnight. You have to have the infrastructure, you have to have the arrangement, and a lot of other things to be able to produce and to export and then to have the money. So, I would say that this is the job in progress. We have started and we are going to continue to recover the economy.
You spoke about mining companies, we'll come to that shortly, but let me tell you about domestic revenue. In your manifesto, it was clear that the government would ensure that revenue GDP ratio reached 20% by 2021. Now, in normal terms, domestic revenue has increased. However, going by that measurement used in your party manifesto, this is hardly the case. Let me give you some figures as well. In 2018, it was 14.3%. In 2019, it was 15.5% of GDP. Now, in 2020, it fell right down to 13% of GDP. Surely, this is nowhere near the 20% mark you have earmarked for this year.
Sure. I think COVID has appeared no exception, and we cannot expect to be an exception. The economy contracted and therefore our target. And that is one of the, when you asked me, has it been an easy task? No, because we do not factor COVID in our equation at all. But COVID, and it has impacted the world, and Sierra Leone is no exception. So we should be starting forward, and what we want to do is resilient with COVID. And we have a plan for that. Once we get COVID behind us, we are going to start forward again.
Hopefully, COVID will go away very shortly, that's our wish. But let me talk to you about the issue of revenue GDP ratio and the era of expenditure because if you can't get more, you cannot suddenly extend more. But the figures here do not seem to add up. Now, the public expenditure tracking survey was conducted by the administration, but the results have never been made public. Now, there is this perception that the results would have shown the government in a bad light sense. It wasn't released to the public. I'll give you some more examples. Wages and salaries paid 95% of your party manifesto. When in your position, your party manifesto was clear about what you termed the uncontrolled wages and salaries of the previous government. Again, I put it to you in terms of numbers. In 2016, wages and salaries amounted to 1.8 trillion euros. In 2017, they went up to 1.9 trillion euros. In 2018, when you came to Paris, let's say halfway, wages and salaries increased to 2.1 trillion euros. In 2019, your first full year, they went up to 2.5 billion. And in 2020, 3.3 billion, sorry, trillion. There is clearly a pattern that your government is adding to the wage expenditure, certainly in 2019 and 2020. What would you say accounts for that bloated public expenditure now?
The wage bill. If we are not doing exactly what you are supposed to do as a nation, we will never move forward. Development will never be realized in this country. Before today, you will realize that everybody was talking about, especially the nurses, the teacher, pinko, pinko, pinko. We trained a lot of people and we just abandoned them. And what we need them, in fact, as I speak to you, we still need more nurses, we still need more teachers. We are taking in about 5,000 teachers and 4,000 nurses. And that is still woefully inadequate. How do you want to be taken care of if you went to the hospital, hospital today? Effective, efficient nurses, they are not there. A lot of them have been trained and they were not on the payroll. They were volunteering for the most part. And when you do that, you don't expect a lot from them. We are talking about education. How can we embark on education without the quality ask which is provided for the most part by the teachers? Houses of teachers are still languishing after having, having been trained. So, but let me come back to this. The opposition of those who talk about the wage bill, they were not able to pay those, that small number. But we have been able to pay ours consistently since we came. We are dealing with inflation, so it is not the numbers. Are we taking teachers for the sake of taking teachers? No. Are we taking in nurses for the sake of taking in nurses? No. Human capital development is our flagship program, remember? And for us to deliver on that, officially, the education aspect, we need teachers. Good teachers, well motivated. So we've had to increase their allowances by 10%. We've had to increase their salary by another 30%, same for the nurses. This is not money waste. So you can understand why the continuous increase in our expenditures.
Another reason may be the issue of extra for the expenditure as well because that means one area which challenges administration very persistently. And I tell you what, I have read some documents which suggest that parliaments approve budgets, but some ministers, departments and agencies get more than double their allocation while others end up getting less than half of theirs. Is this a case of pop lying on the path of your administration or why is it happening?
Well, the fact is a little technical. And what I want to do today is to explain in general terms the strategic, the strategic vision which I have and the leadership I provide at the highest level. When it comes to details of that nature, I will make my minister of finance a very good one to make clear on those, because I will be speaking completely out of my range if I, if I attempt to answer that. I don't want to lie.
I'm not surprised, but the point is it keeps happening repeatedly in various administrations and DAs. Clearly, if there had been a proper intelligence to have studied what would be needed, you wouldn't have the area of somehow having their allocations struggled while others look at that.
As I've stated, my minister will confidently answer that today, I cannot, and I don't want to lie before this nation.
I think that jobs. Jobs have been fewer and far between, fewer and farther between because of all this thing, many scares. But one reason why these jobs have been lost and there's not been any family today that doesn't have somebody who's had to lose a job for one reason or the other, which is biting deep into the pockets and even the survival of many, many people. The mining companies, at least some of them, have been a company since 2018, SL Mining. And Shandong, they showed them more or less like killing a dead man, they were more or less on the way out, and then that's ended. Would you say that you were ill-advised by your Negro people and those in the mining sector in killing a horse that was laying a golden egg?
Well, I don't know how golden that egg was. If we are to check their contribution to national revenue, it was a much improved.
Providing jobs, that's a lot of jobs, Mr. President.
Yes, we are going to provide more jobs, but we need to correct the mistakes that was involved in the mining agreement that they had.
And what are those mistakes?
Quite a lot, quite a lot. And that's why, I don't want, like, you, I think you started the conversation by saying, something specifics. I will be able to give you specifics, but what I don't want to do is to gloss over those in a way that we not give justice to the issue that I want to. That's how money decided to go out to the court. I ordered them to negotiate. So I, since the matter is in the courts, I don't want us to talk a lot about that. But I want to give you the assurance that whatever we are doing, whatever we are doing to cure that situation is for the best interest of this country. We want to be able to, to get more from our resources, and we are not getting much. I don't want to delve into the details as far as SL Mining goes there. But the only assurance which I will give to you is that at the end of the day, we will get a better day and Sierra Leone will benefit more from the mining, the natural resources that are there. It's not going anywhere, it's there for us, less exercise what are called strategic passions. Because we have not been patient in giving these resources out, we have lost quite a lot in the past nearly 100 years. And that is because we did not plan, we did not seek the interests of this country, and that is what I'm seeking. So there is haste to bring the little they can bring, but you only have to deep dive the little and you know that it's not all glossy, as a lot of people think. We can get more from those resources. And I will ask for strategic passions so that when we put together agreements that are in favor of this country.
Talking about mistakes of the past and things that have troubled the country, I just want you to confirm this. I understand that one of the best issues when the Africa Minerals Company Limited had their licenses approved was that the rail and port was handed over to them for 99 years. Instead of the states running the rail and port and renting it out to mining companies that want to use it. I understand that the same mistake is being made, if not has been made, in terms of giving the rail and port to a single company. Is that true or not?
That is not the case, it's the road. The asset there now belongs to the state and we will make more money. I'm saying again, how possible would it be? Let's not rush into this. If we say it has been a messy feat, we cannot just jump into it and let things continue as usual. That's why I need money. I need to make everybody, give them jobs. But I'm deliberately holding on to this so that we can have better arrangements. So the mine, the rail belongs to the state and we can now lease that out to any entity at our own terms.
So mining companies will be using it as a, when they pay for it, or will one single mining company be, be in charge of? So it's clearly that happens, they will see other companies as rivals and they will charge them an arm and a leg.
And that's why it's smart. It belongs to us. We know Kumbra, that Kumbra will get two pickers. Twiddle, you know why it is, you know? The arrangement is such that it is available to all, any mining company that can have access to it, you know, if you can create your, your infrastructure. So that is why we have taken ownership of it. It doesn't belong to one company. As I speak today, if another company comes in that area, general geographical area, they will have access to the rail.
Now, what must Sierra Leone businesses hope for in terms of economic conditions? Facts, incentives, less bureaucracy and awarding of contracts and access to policy stakeholders? In other words, how do you improve on the doing business atmosphere in Sierra Leone, which some people say is cumbersome?
Yes, not as cumbersome as it was.
How is it?
Not as cumbersome as it was. We know that we need to improve on the business climate. And one of the ways you can do that is to clamp down on corruption. We now have a board that examines every proposal that comes here that is of significance so that we can look into that before they are given the okay to go ahead. And once the board decides on that, you can basically accept that your business is going to go ahead. And that is manned by me and my vice president because we noticed that a lot of companies have come here and they will stay in the hotels and leave because they are being harassed by different people who try to mediate between them and the offices. So we have to reduce that and to reduce the bureaucracy. We, we have decided to create this board and that is taking care of that. And it is a one-stop shop facility. We are in, we will look at the strategic goal of any particular enterprise and see if it aligns with national development and what you want to do. And if it sits well with it, our business is to facilitate. We will give you a time of October, and once that time of October is given to you, you can actually get things done. But when I spoke about corruption earlier, it's because if and when we, as a nation, I am leading the fight in corruption, but I need everybody in this hall and in this country to support and embrace the fight against corruption. If we can reduce that, it becomes easier. There is this thing of 419, where we have Sierra Leoneans who specialize in that. And they drive out 10 million investors. That is corruption. You are depriving the people of very good investors. Not all investors are patient and are good investors. We want to be able to screen them and be able to make sure that they... We want to be able to screen them and be able to make sure that they will not encounter all of those challenges again. We are giving tax incentives. I will cite two, two companies, the ones producing PADI and Kisi Industries producing the oil. We want to help those. Those are here, reducing local content in terms of their raw material. And they are moving that they have experienced that they're exporting. They deserve to be supported by us. So for all other companies that come here, depending on the nature of what you want to do and we try to provide support to them in terms of tax incentives and any other thing that we think will support you to easily get established, which is the most difficult. We think also that you have to be serious about our infrastructure, electricity, water and communication. Because you don't want to come and set up your own plant to support your factory. You don't want to look for water if you want to set up a factory. So these are highly cash-intensive infrastructure programs that we are working very hard to make sure that we have them at hand for those who need them most.
Any idea when that one-stop-shop will be established?
It's on already. We officially just have to launch it actually.
Okay, now we go to your flagship project, the issue of humanity. With the benefit of hindsight, would you say that the proclamation of free quality education was a bit rushed? Four months into office, you pronounce dates. Would you say you should have probably given yourself one more year to have put things in place? Classrooms are crowded, teachers, student ratio is discouraging, you know, and structures do not seem to be really functioning as they should because of the sheer scale of the problems. Do you think you should have waited a little bit?
Once the atoms of Africa now at the back of the queue, if you want to cover up, you don't start crawling. You get up and start running. You will fix all the others along the road.
But you must crawl before you walk, you must walk before you run.
That is the mistake. There are times you get up and start to run because you have been there before and you know the benefits of quality education. We were ahead in this region, if not in Africa. And because of our carelessness as a country, we are now at the back. We are not going to start to crawl, get up and run. If other orders we fit in, we are successful right across a lot of indicators. If you want to fix all the classrooms before you declare quality education, it won't be in this town. If you want to have all the money, train all the teachers, it will not be in this town. Take the bull by the bun, the whole bull, they come.
The issue of scrapping the senior secondary school year four, I know that when you were with NPR, I say that was one of the third projects there. Is it a matter of going back to what you believed was right at the time? I'm asking this because essentially what the kids now have is only two academic years in senior secondary school. Because they go to S S one in second term and they write their last exams in the second term of S S three. So effectively it's only two full academic years. Don't you think that has led to the mass failure in the last exam?
Now, you will see to like NPR is quite a lot. And that brings very impressive memories for me and a lot of people there. We are fixing a system that is fit for purpose in this twenty-first century. We've had a lot of challenges even with the school calendar and we are working on that. The, what has been happening in the first, as you know, like with examinations. The kids are no longer studying anymore. And we, the parents, we are supporting them and giving them money to buy papers. The teachers and the principals, we are helping them to have access to this. We are killing the soul of our own children and this nation by doing that. That is what is responsible for the poor results that we have been having.
But if the economy is not, if the teaching is inadequate in terms of the fact that you are teaching them for only two years in senior secondary school, should they manage anything like that?
That is your characterization. It's not exactly two years. Um, we have technical people who have been involved in all of these arrangements. And we don't want to also keep them in school for longer than they really need. I think that we can cover the syllabus so that they can finish the syllabus and be competitive around the world. This is really what we are trying to do. Every year wasted is a year that you cannot get again. So the period that has been specified, I think is okay. What we have to do as parents is stop giving our kids money to go buy papers. We have to tell the teachers to cover the syllabus within the time that they have. I don't think it's different from what continues elsewhere in the world.
Now, that's basic and second education. Let me quickly take you, even if with all those challenges there, we can probably talk about those later, but let me take you to higher education. I mean, one issue, when we received tons of emails and telephone messages from students of Linkin Park, which is a private university. And I know of one former student of that university who has dropped out, is now breaking rocks, is about, is forgotten about, pursuing his education. Do you think the right thing to have done was to have discontinued paying for the continuing students of Linkin Park?
A pity that the students in us are leaving. We are trying to fix a very difficult situation. You know, like I said, we inherited an extremely difficult situation, be it in the economic field, be it in education, basically right across government. And what we are trying to do is to see how we can get all of the students into other universities so that they can continue their education.
It's been two years now they're waiting.
Of course. One year was almost wasted to COVID, you know? We started paying for them, two million was paid. So then we realized that it is unfair to pay thirty million for one student in Linkin Park, which government has to pay by the nature of the agreement. Whereas maybe our kids, our students in commerce don't pay that amount. And to make it even worse, this whole arrangement has never gone to Canada. Even worse, they have never got taken it to Parliament. And it was an arrangement between an individual and a private institution. So we inherited, the nature of the challenges we inherited are not easy to navigate. We have the students, it's our obligation. We preach human capital development. We want to see them both of this. But imagine again, to even compound the problem, most of those who went to that university did not have the normal requirement to attend other universities. So how are we going to take them there? We have a compounded problem. It's a dilemma. We have to get the kids, but the interesting bit that you would believe and all the students that are there is that we have made an arrangement and the new minister is going to take that as a challenge. The one who trusts our trust, he has to be able to get over. Including the students from Linkin Park and all the stakeholders, we want to sit down in dialogue and find an amicable solution so that our students that we care for will be able to go to other institutions. But we cannot continue to pay three thousand dollars for one kid, for one student in Linkin Park when government scholarship is maybe five hundred dollars per student or seven hundred dollars at most in other universities. But that is not fair. And that is not going to, and we don't think we know where that is going because it's a private arrangement.
I understand that, Mr. President. I think, I'm a big fan of the Catholic University mechanic, partly in part because my wife is Catholic. But also because that place has got a lot of improvements.
I'm a Catholic baby, you should like that.
Maybe somebody could say, you imagine, but I've also benefited from that. So we can argue about whether or not the state should pay for students.
But if you say from.
From the video you're talking about, a private university. But the point remains that the other administration continued paying for them for one year. Have you not thought about all of that before you raised your expectations and paid for them for a year and a year?
We had just been approached. We had campaigned on human capital development. Poor students and we are placed with this, we decided that was an inch measured and then we wanted to find a commony solution. And this has been difficult to find. And that is why I have passed the new minister to really delve into this matter, deep dive with all stakeholders, including the students, so that we find a solution to this.
We'll quickly talk about the head sector under human capital development before we go into our break. Are you satisfied with the state of the nation, sir?
No, it's a work in progress.
It's been a very long time working in France.
Three years, three years.
What has changed?
One of which has been taken by COVID. We try to make an accurate comparison. We cannot change the health system without the natural resources.
Do you think anything has changed?
We cannot change the health system without the human aspect of it. Let it be, I want the health system to be like the elders.
National Health Service in the UK.
All right, tonight, what can I do it? Do I have the human beings capable to do it? Do I have the money? What we have been able to do is to take a perfect primary healthcare that is always everywhere in the country. We are taking care of that so that we can prevent the occurrence of a lot of diseases. When we came in, anecdotal evidence has suggested that our intervention through the national ambulance, emergency ambulance system has reduced mortality and infant mortality rate. That is because we were able to deploy all the ambulances. We had to fix them. Remember, they have already started losing parts of it. Some of them had their engines ripped off. We had to repair everything and we have deployed them around the country. And that is, I was pleasantly happy when I went to Camapir and Chintu here. And they are telling me these ambulances are saving our lives. We cannot change overnight. And maybe with that question, I want to appeal to Syrianians that Rome was not built overnight. America has been building and they are still building, three, four hundred years later, the great United, I mean, United Kingdom. We have to understand this, even if I had all the money, I cannot institute the sort of changes that we expect. Development is a painstaking, slow process.
It may be so.
And development needs all of us to support it.
It does, but the reality is some of the most basic things are luxuries in Sierra Union. They took only a single Sierra Union nurse in the United States to establish a center here to provide dialysis for her father. And that has become the only dialysis in the country. They still just not have one. A mammogram to detect breast cancer early now, virtually does not exist in the country. Surely these are not luxuries. These are the most fundamental things we think lack in the head sector.
You are not accurate in the facts there.
That's right.
We have dialysis now, there are machines for dialysis. And that we only brought in when we came in. We have also supported a private dialysis center in Korea. One of not, she is a medical doctor, I think they have four stations there. And we are encouraging others, not just in Britain, to go to the regions because it is not only in Britain that we have needs for that. So as slow as it might be, because we can have the funds to buy the machines, but we need the people to operate them and to fix them when they break down. This takes time.
Are they working outside?
Sure, sure, we, listen, the the technical people who can man these machines are being trained. You cannot, it's not a car that's just torn and works. You have to know how to man them. The private one, another private one in addition to the one you mentioned, which I don't know about, is functioning as I speak to you. And we are training people to man those effectively. And we are talking about cancer. The new health village that we are creating in Kerry Town is going to be revolutionary and transformative because we have realized exactly what you are saying. We don't have to fly out. We have very good heads. We have very good medical doctors. What have we done? As I speak to you through the Mac Foundation and through Madam's effort, I think about twelve medical doctors and nurses are being trained in oncology. It would be useless to have a mammogram or any of these things here if you don't have those who can competently man them. So we are being intentional in how we approach these issues.
When you spoke about Kerry Town, is that a reference to the cancer center which you have spoken so much about? Is that different? You spoke about the cancer center, which you said you wanted to establish. Is that part of the Kerry Town project or is it different?
Kerry Town is a health village. We are going to have several of many facilities, cardiology and all of these things. One is a private one, which is also located in the same city that will provide a range of services, medical services. We are also going to put, using the funds, by the way, people have been asking, where are the funds? Those funds from anti-corruption and ring fights.
When will that ring be taken out for the diagnostic center to be set up?
When you have two million, you can also copy the diagnostic data. So that's why we are ring fighting, not feeling the Minister of Finance can touch it. So what we are doing is we have gotten support and we want to increase that quantity so that we can set up a full-fledged. I did say that we see the money. It's not enough to be a full-fledged center. But we are a compassionate government. We care truly for the people of this country. So we don't only want to educate our kids, which is our responsibility by the way, which we have taken as a help thing, that it should no longer be there. We want to send it to private schools where we pay for every kid. And if we want to take care of the kids of every human being, we also have to do so in terms of providing health security. And that is why they have increased the budget from seven percent to eleven percent.
What an idea when this, I'm keen on this diagnostic center because I've read some very great literatures of late about the number of people dying of cancer in Sierra. It's a stunning killer, my friend, my very close friend, he suffered from cancer. And I thought that we might have a clearer idea as to when this diagnostic center will be set up, which you imagine have a cancer treatment center. Do we have any idea when it will be?
My mother died of cancer. We care truly for every Syrianian. These things do not happen overnight. It is good that you have a president who keeps his word. And we are intentional. We don't want to be flying to the other countries of the world to seek services that we have the heads to provide in this country. The facility will be there. And what I hate to do is, as much as I know about the range of activities happening right across the country, wanting I have a very definitive answer to issues. I don't want to speculate on a national discussion like this. But I will, if you trust me, believe me, that that is ongoing. And we are going to have a national diagnostic center. But I will, if you trust me, believe me, that that is ongoing and we are going to have a national diagnostic center.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We will have a short ten-minute break and we'll be back to talk about the issue of national provision.
You're almost there. The name of the woman is, I would guide the best for anyone who gives me the shortest course in time. Even though the timeframe was very tight, but with the help of me, with my debt and the community people, we support me greatly. I have to do this for making a thing, the house power we don't know with this work.
They won't have a program in session. Precious.
Have you come now, Marm? Marm? Is there now?
I believe you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. I hope that was a needed time in the break. So, Mr. President, we go to the second, the final part of the Istanbul, the issue of national cohesion. How we characterize the current states of cohesion in the country?
Truly speaking, I've been in the values, mostly around political life. We need to make more efforts. I can, as a leader, make my own effort to try to unite this nation. But I'm just an individual and the government is doing what it can to actually keep us together. Because all of what we've been talking about, all the questions, you are basically telling us, oh, me, what are you doing to the other of this nation? If we are serious about our development, we cannot predict that is a very difficult process. If we are divided as a nation, which means it is imperative for us to be together. Of course, we have our political reasons, cultural differences, but we can be united in diversity. And that is what we need in this country. What is happening over the periods, how politicians try to divide us? Using political, the ethnic cards to divide instead of reaching to them what they stand for. So, to a very large extent, politics is what divides us. Let me go back to his history, which I learned about not too long ago, and that is in Bogor. There is a town there that was manned and mostly managed from Bonf and Kailan. And they settled there, Romanite. They came to help by Gure, to fight. And they've been, they settled there and they've been there. Why I am telling this story is because it tells us that when we are working across ethnic lands, regions, it is only now that bad politicians have introduced ethnic cards, regional cards, and that's why we have divided. It's an imperative. The issue is blame, so. Well, I don't, I don't subscribe to ethnic politics, regional politics.
The fact remains that politicians must say that in short arcs of job equipment, they say that survival has become more difficult for them because of being ostracized by the comments. Do you think that's a fair complaint?
Opposition? That's the opposition. The opposition. We don't ask for who is in the opposition. We ask for qualifications.
By the way, the politics of Syria is silly. We can agree to disagree of this, but Syria, our politics is like that on regional lines. So when I say opposition, is there anyone in the north who feel hard on values such?
I have a lot of friends and I have a lot of people from the north and a lot of people voted for me in the north.
A white man can have a black friend, but he still exists.
But I'm not that white man. I have, I have a significant number of people out there who support me. Besides, they are Syrianians. Just forget about that support for me. And even when they go there, that's what I say to them. I go to, I go to the north more than I be to the south and the east. I know why. Because that is where I have the least vote. But that is because they don't know who I am or what I stand for and I need to convince them. And I believe they are a part of this country, so I don't discriminate along that line. And they are going to cry for us, as you know. We have to change certain people when we come in. It's done all over the world. Biden did this. Nobody will accuse them of capitalism, regionalism. And that's the same thing that is done in the UK and elsewhere on the world. But for the most part, we have not pushed out anybody for this human service.
Yeah, but in certain offices, you expect that somebody shouldn't lose their job because, you know, of changing established.
Like we do this.
Like in certain partnerships, lots of people lost their jobs when they became residents, not necessarily because of poverty or...
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to be charged by my performance and delivery. If you are in the opposition and you are going to be a hurdle in my way, I have to get somebody who understands me, who believes in my own manifesto, pledges.
And hurting, hurting by not supporting you or hurting by not managing your establishment, so.
Both. They do a range of things, you know, completely unnecessary.
I should still lose that, Mr. President, because I'm not supposed to.
And you have to talk about support. He said, go. Maybe if somebody does not support me, he is likely to be a hurdle, much more likely to be a hurdle. And that's what I'm saying this. We have relatives, ABCs in certain key positions. I don't want to name names. I protect them because they are performing. They know that. All I mean from many Syrianians, perform whether you are red in color, attacking, and if you are struggling, you will stay in your place. So really, I mean, let's face it, it gives me leadership and say, work, this is what is expected. Today, you've been grading me, you know, going to the little corners, what have you done? I need people that I know who have a record of performance. They have integrity. They, they, they have ethics. What, who work ethics? Those are the people I'm going to look forward for, to, to come in. I'm not going to go to a stranger that never worked with, no, no. And then I perform poorly. You are not going to ask, did you, how many people did you take from the opposition? Besides, you are in the opposition, not you, me. And you know that life was an issue. I don't mean to revenge. All I want from any Syrianian is work hard. And that's where unity is actual. When we came in, we drew up the national, the medium term national development plan. Of course, we sought the input of other stakeholders right across the opposition and all the support. For me, I say human capital development, dedication for development. We need to continue on that path for a long time for us to realize it. So we need unity. We need to buy, we need to get the buy-in of the ABC for this to work. We need to get in the buy-in of C4C for this to work. So that is where the unity is. But talking about unity, we decided to put together the Commission for Peace and National Creation. Yesterday, I was going to, did you talk to the former president? I said, I do, because me, and I call him from time to time.
When last, when last meeting was with him, sir?
I don't give the calendar of that. I'm just talking to him, he says that corruption started on the first day of the year. I put a tag on that, but I will tell you, yeah, I speak regularly.
But that should be easy to determine whether it was before or after the ACC.
I, I don't want to give you a definite answer, but I know I have spoken to him. Practically speaking, you can verify that with him.
Right. And how is your relationship with him?
He's a senior stake man and I treat him like that.
Do you plant jokes when you talk to him?
A lot of people, a lot of ABCs don't have jokes to crack.
I said that there will be no jokes to crack.
Well, well, if you attack me in bull and almost broke my head, I don't think there's a lot of joke that you can crack. If you went to my house and told, you told the whole world that I had an ass that I can destroy this whole nation and you could not find a razor blade in my home, except my shaving. We don't have a lot of jokes to crack.
I'd say there's a mountain of frost written above you.
I'm not saying that. Times are your worst. I talk to him, when I want to talk to him, he calls me when he wants to talk to me. He is a senior stake Syrianian and he should be treated with respect. He's, he has entitlements and those should be given to him.
Would you have counted as a possibility of letting him off the hook, considering there is a good running track for the CR conditions? Does that mean you're counting us? Just forget about anything I have to do, or say with my president?
I don't see a hook yet, so I wouldn't assume at all.
If there was one, would he count us?
When we come to that, then who can say that?
Sir, yes, sir.
No, sir.
Talking about that, it brings us to the issue of accountability. You, as a candidate, spoke a lot about the battle against corruption and the issue of accountability came back and I've said that. Are you satisfied with the sensation of justice, the tolerance of seeing corrupt officials? Could you say you have on thieves as suspects in terms of protecting them or is that just for the pain?
I'm not, I should not be the determinant person. There's a worse than in place. I showed them exactly what we mean by not having a separate account, not the separate accounts of the past. Now, nobody is protected. The Anti-Corruption Commission is working. I don't talk to them, they don't talk to me. Where they see corruption, they will see corruption. And of course, we've been talking a lot about the Office Report. That goes right across the check. And if there are anomalies in the way people account for monies that they use, then we send those and we will implement those. So, nobody is sacred. I tell everybody, government money, the people's money is sacred too. We should protect and use it for the purposes for which they are meant.
We recently tried to fight against corruption as minimizing corruption in our administration, or do you think you also have feelings in our institution?
I wouldn't call anybody I've appointed as thieves, but I'm telling you for sure that now, if you have to steal, you must be very cautious. You know it is risky. You know if you are hot, the penalties can be quite rigid. You, you know, if you are hot, the penalties can be quite rigid. It's not the impunity that, that went along with corruption is what we have taken care of. I think and I believe from the perceptions of these who had objective ones, that we have done quite a lot to instill fear into any potential thief. They, when, 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 when I took over, you remember, we had a mega forty-nine percent according to the MCC. Now, we are way in our eighties. That means we are working. This is not an easy fight. It is not going to be won overnight. Excuse me, we have all been corrupted historically. That we have to make a, a decision to draw a line and change. Sometimes people talk about corruption as if they are not corrupt. You know, the policeman talks about corruption of the, the, of the politicians. You go to the hospital, they ask you to bring a paper to write on it. That is all corruption. What we have to recognize and acknowledge as a country is that it is not a single person that has been corrupt. We, it's a, it became a culture and that culture, fighting against a culture is not an easy fight. It's a collective fight and I invite every senior to take this fight seriously so that we can win this fight against corruption.
Yes, the fight against corruption, that's a continuing to be honest, and I think I should ask you a bit about governance turnover. Would you say you are pleased with the relationship between the central government and the local government? I ask this in particular, um, because of the current frosty relations between the mayor of Fita and the minister of the government.
What, um, in many, uh, human organizations, there are some dynamics that go wrong. If you are dissupporting it, you have to recognize that you are supporting it. And there are, there is a supervisory ministry to most of the organizations. If you don't recognize that, that is when we should set seed.
But if the central government recalls frosty, frosty flow to the masses?
That is what the act to decide.
But as you, as you advise you, or as you advise you, does it then recruit us as was considered by the of Fita? Was correctly done or did somebody, Alex, someone else insert it?
They, um, I think that there is, there is, there should be consultation in that process.
Do you think there was?
Um, they, maybe not enough.
So you should bring it to the minister.
No, I have to be able to identify where they went from.
Who, the mayor or the minister?
No, no, I'm not talking about the mayor. I'm talking about, because it's a whole arrangement. Uh, but then, then, the, the, the act speaks specifically to that, that they have to have an arrangement to be able to elect, to, to appoint those that, uh, 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 are eligible and they have to also, I, I, the, the, you, you've spoken about a frosty relationship, which I think what I've suggested to the minister is for, it, it's for them to have an investigation into this whole matter. Because it, it, it projects a wrong image of what we really want.
Would that be fair, it's like the ministry is starting as Jordan, Chile, etc.?
Uh, well, you're assuming it's going to be the ministry that is going to. Because that's not my intention, is to have stakeholders who are going in there to solve out the problem and not compound it. And therefore, you cannot take the ministry or the minister to lead in charge of that. But they are actually from other box of five. If you actually put, they group together, you say, go there, we do this, look at the documentation. Who has the power to do this and where did they go wrong? And then make recommendations.
We asked people to send in the, to send to emails to ask questions. One of them asked to Huya, continually asked about that. So he says that you are most times quiet, without a great sense of what's happening, including that's involved in the mayor, the relationship with the government and the office of general. He feels that you should have spoken a lot more about those issues to have calm down situation.
As you very well know, I don't talk normally. I am not a play point leader. That's my leadership style, you have to understand it. I comment on national issues, as and when it is necessary, extremely necessary. But what is going on there is going to be investigated. For the, um, audit to general, that has, I know about what is going on. I've heard about it. She and I discuss issues. We have not had the opportunity to discuss this particular one. Because as you very well know, we are a political nation. Even at death, we carry our particulates. So when issues like this happen, for me, like I said to you much earlier for this conversation, the audit service to review as part of our accountability structures, if we are serious about corruption, we have to listen to them. They have to be, uh, they have, they have to do a credible job too. So that they, they can identify the issues that are wrong, the issues that, uh, take place in the various ministries and departments and that way we can start to address. They, they, when people talk about not addressing, we have only changed a few people in the system. It's the same old system, the same old people. So you don't expect them to change their, their ways of doing things immediately.
The audit service is one of the most respected state institutions in Syria, you know. And he has said that Syria is constantly looking to hold the government accountable, as not just the law allows them to. Do you feel sorry for the audit officer, for what she says, for the, for who some say is asking for doing a good job, audit services?
Do you also pity me or my wife when they talk about her?
The audit service, you mean, talk about her or?
No.
Well, I'm specific in terms of the.
We are talking about her now, we seem to be concerned about her. But you know what has been said about my person, my wife and all of these people sitting here?
Maybe you are a politician, she is not.
Public officer. It is the public. When you step into that space, there is no more fence. You are open. They say everything and anything about you. I am, you think my intervention is going to stop?
Maybe, I think, I think that's what I'm supposed to do. The point is, be that as it may, do you sympathize or at least do you empathize with that?
I, I do. And you know, they, they act, they, like, should I call it as an accusation? You're making, the same thing my wife does me. They are telling me, I'm a thief, I'm not this, and she cries and then, I say, I'll be called, what's next? But nobody can beat her here. I chose to come here. If you can't stand the heat, don't go to the kitchen.
And thus, it is on Mercedes, we see our leaders at this. Um, we, one says, Mr. President, what has been your greatest or greatest challenge so far during the presidency?
So many.
The guest?
Um, I have to order these challenges because in Syria, everything is a challenge. And they are all big, or blah blah. I took, um, I, I need a few moments to actually order them and see if people want to, I want to pop up and sit on top of the table.
I read this one from Alima to Dimonne Kenai. She writes, yes, Mr. President, I would like to commend you and your administration for your bright stance in promoting rights for women and girls in Syria. More recently, celebrating International Women's Day. We personally recognize the role women and girls have played throughout your term. Sadly, however, we have seen successive governments deny us a political way to achieve more for our women and girls. As you said in your speech for International Women's Day, we will support the call for the action, for the action women leaders are making. However, as women and girls, we cannot attain our full potential in the areas such as gender-based violence, as in women and girls' hands, your excellency. I and many other women and girls who have big things and survivors of abuse today are asking you to grant us the ultimate case. Let, let us, we ask that you once and for all remove tears and pain from us and ban female genital cutting outstrials. It is on the area of SGBV where there is, there is so much ambiguity.
Um, I don't know where the ambiguity is. This has been a very funny issue, uh, in the body of our country. And of course, successive governments have not been able to, ready to arrest it. But there's a law. There is the, um, children's, um, what is the name of the act?
Child rights act.
Child rights act.
Child rights, yes.
Which protects them from, um, starting to create traditional practices, hunting practices. That one presupposes that there is a law. What we need to do, which is difficult for even the women who be saying that, because you have to, as I tell you, I cannot go into a boulder bush. Somebody has to say, this is happening and then the action comes into being. But let's not forget that, um, we have made the effort to protect women. And she has just put a whole list of things there, which no government did before me, to protect women, to empower women. The red issue, hands over a gun, which she forgot to mention, a lot of that.
But will you or will you not ban FDR?
I'm coming to the table. FDR is a deep cultural practice in this country. Um, a lot of people are campaigning for its evolution. None, they've not been successful. We have to, as a society, decide on how it is going to go. And the law there is the beginning. Until you are eighteen, you are not supposed to be subjected to, to, uh, 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 this career of whatever traditional practices. After eighteen, you make a decision, but that is a good beginning. If you go like that for the next ten, twenty years, this is the practice I believe will instill high outpourts. But I don't think you want me to commit political suicide. But there is already a.
So, Mr. President, you know what to do, sir, to learn it.
We have a system that is taking care of that very slowly.
Very slowly. All right, let me look at you. There's a lot of people here from Ahmed, Sanit, Nazraman from the live audience, who writes, Mr. President, the early of your democracy is deeply strongly on the cybercrime during twenty twenty. What assurance can you give that if passed into law, it will not automatically regress the huge gains young governments have made in the area of free speech and free press? I'm sure it means that we got a criminal law. How would this protect that place?
I cannot be that ambiguous to repeal a sixty-five, how many years old? Years. Law and then replace it another. I'm very intentional. Let's face the fact, cyberspace is a new space. And a lot of things down there that can harm us, harm society. As we are around the world, people are now making these laws to just regulate what happens there. So, I mean, by now, my intentions should declare to this nation that we are not here to clamp them on free speech. I could not have taken that political suicide, which, uh, may or attempted that when all my colleagues before me, we are afraid to step into that space. So it should declare to everybody that we are doing this because now they think it is the government that wants to do it. Not, but we saw incitement in the cyberspace that caused the death of people in this country. People use cyberspace to violate you, to damage your whole reputation, to do a lot of harm, instill fear. We are talking about this. One man who effectively knows how to handle that, yeah, um, things in that cyberspace can cause war in this country. So is it wrong to try to regulate that space? No, I truly believe that it has to be regulated, that it's enough rid of there, that there should be certain instructions that do not impede on the right of property.
Kimma James, again in the audience here, says, you said you have a one-stop all. Now that you and your vice presidents will directly look at, as a guide investors. And this being so, what would be the role of slaver? Do you not need to place it as our slaver?
The board, I'm talking about the National Investment Board. Slaver is a part, a, a part of it. What we want to do is to provide strategic leadership. If there is a project, because what is happening, everybody is a, is an investor in this country. People come, we lay down five thousand and they hold their portfolio, we go behind after them, oh, I get investor. We want to just get rid of all of this. You come to us, you keep us a focus, I think we sit there, if I'm not there, the vice president will be there. The, the minister of finance, trade, a lot of women will there. We straight away determine whether this is anything to go by. If we decide, we make sure slaver, the, um, corporate, uh, what, everybody, they have to immediately satisfy that, give you all your papers in the virtue of time. That's basically it.
And Alima's one there says, what are your mistakes or regrets so far? Personal actions and policies, any reflections?
Mistakes? I just started three years as president. Uh, Mr. President, for three years in the country, this is, he's so short, he's so short.
So you have no regrets, any regrets, mistakes?
Um, mistakes?
Could you have appointed a lot more women for example?
I really are going to, I have women.
More, more women. It's close to the market compared to the population of women in the country.
Yes, but like I told you before, uh, maybe we are using different criteria. As the moment I know more of it, who can deliver and believe in what I am doing or want to do. Be sure they are going to come and go. I don't discriminate against them. Let me tell you a story. I lost my dad when I was only four. And I've never had a, a mayor in my life.
I don't have a mayor, okay.
At all. So I believe in women. They are, they are among the best when it comes to resilience, when it comes to determination. All that I am comes from the poor women who is not, who is not letter. They have sorrows in this. So I truly believe in women. So when I fight for women, it is from the heart. When I appoint to women, it is from my heart because I know, they can be more loyal than us. They are great fighters and the team is stressed more comfortably than you and I. I see you are being brought to all of your friends on man. I have this of really, yeah, true. That's because of the stress, women, they put up a lot of that.
Right. How do you design as a laminator, the C four C apologies, who is in the obvious?
Right.
Your residency, what is your view on the women as a whole and ethnicity? As factors that undermine democratic constitution and political inclusion in the political sphere of the last twenty years?
Well, I'm, I am opposing proportional representation. The next session. If you support me. I'm one of so many, sir. You have a deep, you have a deep voice. You have helped me to convince many others who are already fighting against that. I'm quite, okay, we are talking about peace and peaceful existence in this country. We have realized, I have realized as a leader, that we need to be together. You're speaking about political, uh, colors. How do we do this? We know you, Umaru. I don't want you to hide behind any color when you want to contest for political leadership. I don't want you to hide behind any color when you want to contest for political leadership. I hear in the next three years.
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't listen. You want to stand there as Umaru, who is known, has a track record of talk and do. Who is credible, who says things and do them. So we vote for color, but Umaru, who is going to deliver, because we know him. We hide behind colors. And because these colors have structures, these structures come into motion immediately. If you touch me, you touch a lot of other people and they are going to fight. And because it's a limited, I've been there for me defending, that's why there's a lot of violence. We have to dismantle all of this. And sometimes, let's say in the north, if, if I give proportional representation, I will have some, 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 the people from the north.
So let's go to Mr. President, are you saying you are calling for PR system against the twenty twenty-three elections? If should be so, does that presuppose that we are going to have a review of our position voted on before the elections?
That is a tall order, as you know. Already there is opposition to it from a lot of quarters. But I have to sit down with them, convince them, I'm not bringing this for twenty twenty-three.
Maybe your party, your position to it. Because my understanding is the ABC don't seem to be posed to the proportional representation system. That's how I understand.
You don't have the same understanding. Yes. If you can help me push this forward. For me, I want to leave a more peaceful country when I leave this office. And I want us to check one another for who we are. Nobody should hide behind colors. Um, so you know that from the time you, you start to go to speak, if you want to do politics, you start to do the right things. So when you stand up or come forward for any position, keep having a way of evaluating who you are. And then we vote or not vote for you based on how much they know you.
Thank you, sir. Your master, Saraz Ocela, who is also in the audience here, says, Sierra region is one of the poorest countries in the world, ranking one eight zero as of one eight seven countries. What specifically under government does Saudi get this?
Well, as I've said, we should not be, we should not expect the market to have organized. This was regarded as one of the most corrupt countries and therefore we deserve that position. What have I done? Now I've removed Syria on the corruption index, especially with the M system and outside group that made an assessment of our fight. Now we are moved from forty-nine and we are in the eighties. That is one effort. In the way we handle national issues, when we had Ebola, it was not only a health catastrophe, but a serious scandal around money that we have spent. Today, the way we have handled COVID, we are rated among the best in the world, even ahead of the United States. We are inching towards what the lady is, it is aspirational. Why do I insist on human capital development? A bigger move. It is because whatever we say or do, until we have quality education, we can bring our kids, uh, um, apart, make them competitive in the world, useful, we, we, I mean, as useful citizens in the twenty-first century, we are never going to move an inch forward. So very slow, it may be very slow, but that human capital development, which once made us the assets of the South African, have gone back to it. We are the most important asset in this country. You can count your diamonds, gold and that, and one day they are all going to be finished. We are going to be here and we do development and we are the target of development. Until and unless we invest in us, human beings, we can never move. So all of these baby steps we are taking is towards that aspiration, to make, to remove us from that stigma, that shameful position in the world. They have been established. Countries that lead us today have had to take theirs and they've been taking them for over centuries. That is why you have the United States, you have the Singapore of the world, you have the United Kingdom and Canada, Australia and all Germany, France and all of this, they have had to deliberately intentionally say, we are going to support. And you take a step at a step and requires the commitment from all of us. And that is what I would say, that while in fact the whole of Syria, when we say free quality education, it is not my program. It's free qualities of education for Syria because it lays the strongest foundation for national development, personal development and to be a useful, meaningful part, productive part of the third century.
I know it's still, I think it is still as worthy of it. Sorry, Senator Mara, governors, advocates and lawyer, who is also in the audience, right? If one were to ask you, what are the highlights of your judicial reports? What would you point to apart from the acquaintance of new judges?
We have not taken much as far as the judicial is concerned, I must confess.
Why that?
Not because it doesn't matter. In fact, as a matter of fact, it's one of the areas that we need to really look at. What I have tasked them is for them to actually come together and tell us what is it that we need to do. Not only in terms of conditions of status, but what we can do to make them more effective. Because as we all know, without the rule of law, there can be locals, like we're talking about. And that was exemplified in the truth and reconciliation provisions, but that is a fact also. So it is not the cost, it is not the worth. It is because, as I, as I said earlier, there are too many things to do and you have to order. Which one comes first, second, or and so on and so forth. But now that you've reminded me, definitely, I think that is a good point to take.
Are you pleased with the justice, the dispensation of justice? Do you think citizens get justice or do you think it's, uh, they don't?
Well, I never got justice when I was in the position and it has not changed much.
Doesn't make it right.
No, so I can see there is, uh, uh, um, um, people are happy with the justice system. And that's why I hope you that we need to embark on certain reforms within the justice system.
When will you see that move?
I can repeat it, but trust me, definitely, it is a legitimate concern and need for the.
Would you rather we had a system whereby the chief justice cannot be changed just because it's a China government?
Yes, the chief justice is not a politician who will campaign or advise or leadership. The chief justice is a professional, strictly professional, ethical. Dispenses justice or is interested in making sure that the structure of it decides over dispenses justice. I have given there, in him or her there, as long as, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President, and for sure, I don't have time, I've already eaten into the agreed time. So I will just thank you behalf of the organizers of this show, Mr. President, for your time here for this special edition of the CRI debates, which was organized by CRI and funded by, or sponsored rather by Mercury International, Ilraj, Afisal and Prodigy Web. Thank you from, Mr. President, for your time. Thank you for that.